Thank you. Kevin Walsh of the Office of Real Estate Services. First of all, I want to thank the Commission and the planning staff and planning council, Bob and Pat and all for accommodating us this evening, you know, on relatively short notice, especially after it had been a meeting recently that was adjourned. I'm joined tonight by co-counsel for the county, Josh Meyer of the West Group, who will be representing the county on this application as it proceeds. So we here could certainly answer questions.
We're going to rely upon you to answer questions. Trust me.
Good evening. Josh Meyer, West Group Law, 81 Main Street, White Plains, New York, 10601. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce this project to the Commission. The last time I was here is actually a decade ago on the original Coliseum project. So as you know, a lot has transpired on that property since that time. As you may be aware, we're currently in the process of negotiating two separate leases with Las Vegas Sands on the Coliseum parcels and the hotel parcels. And the county legislature will need to approve the assignment of the existing leases from the existing tenant to Las Vegas Sands, the termination of the leases, and then entering into two separate leases for the Coliseum parcel and the hotel parcels. Las Vegas Sands intends to develop what they consider as an integrated resort development on the property. That includes community spaces, a four or five-star hotel, a live music or performance venue, restaurants, meeting and convention space, and a casino. As I indicated, we're in the process of negotiating the leases, but wanted to introduce this to the Commission to get the approval process started and receive feedback at this hearing. Just wanted to reiterate, as John said, that the town of Hempstead will end up being the lead agency. What we're here before the Commission on today is legislative action on the approval and of the assignment of the leases, the termination, and entering into the two new leases. So it's legislative action on that. But the town of Hempstead will actually be the lead agency on what is actually developed on the property. They'll do a review of the conceptual master plan and the site plan of what actually is going to be developed on the site. That's all. Thank you very much.
So let's just think through that last step, then. If the leases are going to be extinguished and redone, and the development plan has to be developed in order for it to go before the town and any secret process that town is going to require, so then would the legislature wait to adopt an amended lease after everything is done at the town level in terms of any potential secret compliance that would be required before they allow either a special use or some kind of change in zone?
Right. So the way that the leases are structured now is there's flexibility built in there. As you may be aware, the Las Vegas Sands is in the process of participating in a procurement at the state level for the three casino licenses. Depending on what happens with that process and if they're awarded a casino license will depend on what exactly is developed on the property. So there's flexibility built into the leases right now to permit something that occurs upon the award of the license or if not. So there's prohibited uses, there's permitted uses on the site. So the flexibility is built in there now with the understanding that whatever happens will go before the town of Hempstead for that approval, and we'll come back to this Commission and this body for at least 239M.
So I think that's an important point that you just brought up, that while we take this hearing in this action tonight or at a future date, it does come before us after the town of Hempstead has a chance to put their touch on it and also the 239M.
That's correct.
Okay. I'd like the Commissioners and the public to understand that. Any other questions?
Well, with all that said, bringing it down to your main point, today, what we're really looking at is an assignment of a lease that currently exists, so the old one has to be extinguished. Can you just speak to, when was that adopted, that lease, the date of it? And essentially, it covers the activities at the Coliseum and the other site. There's two sites.
That's correct. So it was in 2013, when I was previously before this board. That's when that lease, was the original date of the lease. And for the hotel leases, Kevin?
Were you here in 2013?
I was. I can speak to the, Josh is correct, the Coliseum lease was redone in, I guess, 2013. The Marriott is actually three parcels. The county has a ground lease from approximately 1980, when the Marriott Hotel was constructed. That's a 99-year ground lease. There's actually a lease for the hotel, Marriott parcel itself, and two separate vacant lots adjacent. Those are long-term ground leases that the county still is the ground landlord, and Marriott's the ground tenant.
And so, once again, in terms of today's hearing, normally, the Planning Commission is very much engaged in questions of traffic impact and other environmental concerns. But at this stage, we don't have a proposal. What we're having is just a reassignment of who holds the lease. So there's no real opportunity at this stage for environmental review, essentially.
That's correct. That's correct. So it is limited just to the legislative action, the approval, the assignment, termination, and entering into the two new leases. And the town board would handle anything on the traffic impact or anything along those lines.
Any other Commissioners have any questions? We got a...
The lease transfer to Las Vegas Sands, they don't hold a New York State license yet on this. They weren't granted, New York State...
No one's been granted.
No one's been granted at all.
That's correct.
And if they're not granted the license, what happens to the lease at that point?
Then they will have the opportunity to present a different type of development on the property at that time.
But they're going to be the leaseholder at that point, no matter what.
They will be the leaseholder. That's correct.
Okay.
And will this, will the Las Vegas Sands take the leasehold subject to Marriott and the existing tenant that the Coliseum's tenancy?
That's correct. Yes, they will.
Okay.
We got a large stack, a lot of people wanting to speak and a lot of people here. So I want everyone to understand, we have a three-minute clock underneath here. Our timer is over there, is John. Please be respectful of that. And also, please limit your comments and don't repeat what someone else has said unless it's something that you think is germane. And if you want to pass, that's okay too. All right. The first speaker here in the pile is Matthew Arerich from the President of the Building and Construction Trades Council of Nassau and Suffolk County. Matty.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Before you start that clock, there's something I want to make a comment about, that other lease that we were talking about. And the reason is because if you had mentioned something about 2013, I believe that RXR was actually the holder of that lease. And the reason I know this is because what happened was I negotiated the agreement with RXR. And the reason is, I'm going to say exactly what we're trying to do at this point. So I may want to make that clear. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Number one is, thank... Sure. My name is Matthew Arerich. I am the President of the Building and Construction Trades Council for Nassau and Suffolk County. He's representing 65,000 skilled tradeswomen and tradesmen. Just so you know, I brought a few of my friends here today. Am I here? Okay. So here's what happens. What we're looking to do is actually, when we're talking about those leases, we want to reassign those leases with the project labor agreement provision that's in there. This is the reason why I spoke about the RXR component when we were talking about the hub last time. That's an important thing to notice. And another thing is, we want to continue to make sure that the PLA is included in any provision for both the Marriott and any hubs of subsequent leases that are there. Speaking about this project, I could tell you that this is one of the projects that's going to be transformative for Nassau County. It's going to provide opportunities for 8,500 jobs. We're actually putting together a program which is like no other in the state, because what we're doing is, aside from taking positions on making sure that there are men and women of color, to make sure that we include diversity and, sorry, address inclusion and diversity, we want to ensure that we want to make another alternative, which is those that are trying to start their own business, who are members, are actually going to get the opportunity. I will tell you too, that Las Vegas Sands put money at risk, which is $300,000, to make sure that these people have the opportunity to become the entrepreneurs. So you can get not only local labor, you'll get local contractors, and you'll try to go ahead and meet the goals of the state, which is somewhere in a neighborhood of 30%. I will tell you that the building trades here in Long Island and New York City are the safest in the world, and I will tell you that as well, that we are the most skilled. The other thing is, if you're talking about jobs, we're talking 8,500. Now, when you go to college, you have a lot of bills, which means you get out and you have $200,000 in debt. I will put you through a four-year program with this, and what will happen is, you'll not only earn while you learn, you'll have no debt. And at the end, what we'll find is that all the people that we train, whether it be the apprentices or the mechanics, we actually train and graduate more people through the building trades than all private colleges in the United States combined. That's the reason that we are the barometer for the economy. When I say this, I'll make reference to a town like Huntington. We took in 19 pre-apprentices with the idea that we wanted to make sure that they graduate and have a career, not a job. And the idea was this, 19 people with a minimum salary of $75 an hour, times 40 hours a week, times 48 weeks a year, comes out to how much? I'm going to save you the trouble. It's $2.7 million. Now, if they never get another raise over the course of 30 years, that's $82 million. That's real economic activity, and that's 19 people. I have 65,000 members in the council. Now you understand why we're the barometer for the economy. And in addition to that, this is going to generate so much revenue for the county that it likely will not have to raise any taxes in the town of Hempstead for a period of almost 10 years. In addition to that, if you want to have your taxes paid, why don't you have people that come here and spend their money here rather than the residents? That's the smartest thing. And the last thing I could say is, you get three minutes to speak here. So when you hear that sound, it goes off like this, that means this turkey's done.
Thank you, Matty, for being a good leadoff speaker.
I'm sorry. May I, I want to be mindful that, you know, you mentioned about the fire marshal and stuff. And one of the things I did was, I said, if you give me the opportunity, what I'll do is, I'll have a speech here, and then what I'll do is, I will ask those that are not speaking from the building trades to go ahead and leave for the evening. As you could see, they've done their job. They've shown that this is exactly what we want to do, and for that, we are grateful for you and also grateful to everybody who came. So we will be respectful. Again, those that are not speaking, feel free to leave on your own, and thank you very much.
Thank you. The chairman does like a crowd, though. I'm in Ansari, Long Island Federation of Labor.
Thank you. So my name is Imran Ansari, political director of Long Island Federation of Labor, representing 250,000 union members and their families. Not going to repeat too much of what Matty said, a couple from, aside from a few points, just to reiterate. You know, the Las Vegas Sands have come to us as good-faith actors, committed to using union labor on the build side of this resort, as well as committed to labor peace agreements on the operations and maintenance side. So workers who will be, you know, running this project, this resort, will have the freedom to also join a union and provide good wages to their, for their families. Wanted to also just take a quick aside. You know, I'm a lifelong Long Island resident myself, Hofstra alum. If I could also just put that hat on for a second, if this resort was there when I was a student, this would have been a great value add to the community. Would have been a great place to have a job, to go and, you know, contribute to our local sales tax base. So just wanted to just quickly throw that in there, because it is important to note for the locals. Just to finish this, the Sands have committed to delivering quality jobs, tax revenue, and a reason for young people to stay on Long Island. Can't miss this opportunity for the region. So just thank you all for your time, and I'll be brief. Thank you.
Jerry Larashuda, CSCA Region One.
Thank you for the planning board and Legislative Planning Commission here to allow us to speak. Really appreciate the opportunity. You know, one of the numbers that was not mentioned yet, and it will be, is I think we're creating upwards of 12,000 union jobs in the building process of this great project. And to be honest with you, I think personally, this, you know, there's a lot of questions when I first heard about it. I was like everybody else. I'm a resident of Nassau County. We all go back to the days, you know, I had a great amount of respect for the late Charles Wong. And I worked with Charles on trying to come to an agreement, was that 10 years ago maybe, on the hub project? But it was a taxpayer-funded project, and Nassau was not in good shape. And they were talking about layoffs, and I said, you know, Charles, much as I love you and I respect you, I can't support that because the burden falls on the taxpayer, and we can't, our budget is not okay. You've got the exact opposite going here. First of all, nobody does it better, and you know this, nobody works better, harder, cleaner, safer than union members in this country, and that's for sure. And you're going to have... And after question, after speaking with the leaders of this project and the owners, my first was, well, listen, everyone's going to talk about, you know, Las Vegas and Atlantic City and crime and drugs and this and that. Let me tell you, that's a legitimate concern. But this group is taking it head-on. They're privately funding this, and they are working with the community on a day-to-day basis. And I heard before, yes, minorities and young folks that are leaving Long Island because they can't afford to stay here, they're going to have 8,500 jobs. Listen, going to work every day when you're economically stressed is very depressing. I know when I was younger, it was very difficult. You know, we didn't grow up very wealthy. But I got to tell you, this is a shot in the arm for Nassau County that you'll never see again. I think it's a one-time shot. I really do, because I can't see another, any kind of, the size and scope of this project is so immense and so important. Talking about the sales tax, you know how much the sale tax is going to go up in the town of Hempstead? And I even think the areas of Uniondale, Merrick, Westbury, they're going to see great improvements in their areas as well. And we're working closely with the Nassau Community College, who has joined onto this project. So let's move forward. I think that, thank you again, I think that everyone is going to say someday, wow, Nassau got it right. And it's such a big shot in the arm financially, economically, safety-wise, and we will no longer have to worry about that big piece of land in the middle of Nassau County that has absolutely nothing going on. Now, we're going to have a whole world, I'm going to have our first convention. Give me a couple seconds. You know, CSCA has not had a convention here in Long Island, ever. Why? Because every year, we have to go to New York City or Buffalo, Rochester, because Long Island can't properly suit them. They don't have enough hotel rooms, they don't have a convention center, and all kinds of things. That's going to change. We're going to be in the major leagues here, and it's going to be such an economic boom going forward. I really appreciate the time. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Next, Jennifer Moan, Hofstra University.
Good evening, everyone, and again, thank you for the opportunity. I'm really going to focus on process. We've heard, we know that this is about an application for an assignment of the lease. And we've also heard some people talk about environmental issues, but that we can worry about those later. And I guess what I just wanted to register is my objection to, in terms of process, that, you know, this is a very important issue. We can see this is a very, very important issue to the community. No materials were provided in advance of this meeting, that the public needs a full opportunity and a fair opportunity. Consider all of these important issues. More information will be, is what's best here. And one of those, you know, serious issues, which again, I've heard some of you talk about, is the environmental concerns that need to be addressed. I've heard about, well, you, don't worry, you can address those later, but really, those are important, they should be addressed now. I mean, this area where this is going to be happening is an area, one of 10, that New York State has found to have very poor air quality. We're in the middle of monitoring that air quality. So what's the impact going to be on something like this of the air quality? I mean, that's just one, but I think these issues are important, information is important, and any decision on this application, even with regard to the assignment of the lease, should be deferred until materials are publicly disclosed and we have a, you know, an open hearing, and everyone has an opportunity to review and comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, and I think Mr. O'Brien explained the process, and that many of the issues you touched upon will be addressed by the town of Hempstead. Thank you. Next, Frank Camorano, Nassau President, Nassau Council of Chambers of Commerce.
Hi, Neil. Thanks for having me here. My name is Frank Camorano, President of the Nassau Council of Chambers of Commerce, the umbrella organization of the 45 chambers here for almost 50 years, right in this county. Our focus has always been the support of small businesses and, of course, our communities here, and that's what brings me here today. The county, the county executive and the legislator are aware of what we do for small business, and I'd like to thank them as they just approved our large grant and tasked us to help all the small businesses in Nassau County affected by the pandemic. I'd like to thank them for that. A project of this magnitude will undoubtedly be transformative to our region, let alone the county. This at a time when our economy could be headed in a better direction will turn the tide, at least on Long Island. But we need to continue to all work together, as our organization has done, small businesses and communities with the Sands, for a successful outcome all around. That's our goal. There's plenty to do on all counts, for sure, but and quite a ways to go. But the process needs to move forward for this to happen. To that end, we request that the transfer of the lease from the current developer, RXR, to the Sands be approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay.
Anthony Guerrero, Local 28 Sheet Metal Workers.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Anthony Guerrero. I'm an American Ecuadorian, and this past February marks my 29th year as a proud member of Local 28 Sheet Metal Workers. February also happens to be my 23rd year as a proud Nassau County resident. I'm here today along with my friends, other building trade members, to strongly support the Sands' proposal for an integrated resort at the Nassau Hub. As you can see, I'm a, I'm a big stakeholder, where I represent three, three things. First off, I would like to thank the Sands for their pro-union approach. They have already pledged a PLA, a project labor agreement, for the development of this project. Having a PLA on a massive project will ensure that there will be an efficient completion of the project, and most importantly, it will establish fair wages and benefits for all workers. It is also much appreciated and refreshing for Sands to come to the Long Island Labor Movement and our diverse communities, first, to join in a partnership for this great project. Most of the time, developers come into the chamber looking for taxpayer handouts, and never once communicate to our residents, our members, or any of the communities of color in the area on how we will enjoy the benefits. The Sands' proposal will bring so much opportunity to not only to thousands of union members who will build a resort, but for those who will work there post-construction. Think of the thousand of long-term union career opportunities for the residents of Nassau County and Long Island region itself. A project like this would mean so much to the young people of Long Island, who have been leaving because of the lack of career opportunities and entertainment. This project will provide the hope for them to live, work, play, and stay here on Long Island. All these opportunities that I speak of bring something that we desperately need on Long Island: revenue. It's expensive to live on Long Island. We all know this, yet many of our residents are quick to shoot every idea down because of NIMBY, not in my backyard. The problem with NIMBY is that we let a few individuals stop development, and all the residents of Long Island suffer. Long Island deserves the opportunities for good-paying union jobs and the economic benefits that come in with responsible growth. We need this. We can't afford to miss out on a generational economic opportunity. Thank you, and good night.
Bill Sweeney, Teamsters Local 282.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Bill Sweeney, and I'm a business agent with Teamsters Local 282. I represent approximately 4,000 members. I would like to say that I think it's important for the Nassau County Planning Commission to know that the Sands' proposal for an integrated resort at the Nassau Hub stands to bring unprecedented opportunities to Long Island. I address you not only as a labor leader, but as a father of three adult children, two who have left Long Island for better career and quality of life opportunities, and my youngest, who is recently married, is considering the same. More and more, young people are leaving, and even less are coming here. This project would not only secure good-paying union jobs for all of our members, but it would also sustain good career opportunities for our young, for our young adults. A project like this is vital for the growth of this community and others. The time is right, and our future depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maria Pali, Local 338, RWDU, UFCW.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'd first like to introduce myself. My name is Maria Paul. I'm a union representative for Local 338, RWDSU, UFCW. Sorry. I'm short. Sorry.
It's okay.
I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Maria Paul. I'm a union representative for Local 338, RWDSU, UFCW, a labor union that represents over 15,000 working people across New York, with thousands that live right here on Long Island. I would like to also share that I am a Nassau County resident, along with my members that I represent, and are very excited about the Sands building a hub, the Sands building in an integrated hub right here in Nassau. The Sands has, the Sands has already shown us good intention to work with labor union, the Long Island Labor Movement and Long Island's communities throughout, sorry, throughout they continue to work development, and they have extensive meetings with our union leaders. They also have signed a project labor agreement. Not only will this project mean thousands of jobs for our brothers and sisters in labor, but will open thousands of doors for more long-term careers for Nassau County members. For young people on Long Island, who we all worry that will move away, this will give opportunities for jobs, entertainment, culture, and provide hope for them that they can stay and live on Long Island, and also have a place to enjoy and stay. In addition to working with our existing unions, the Sands have gone the extra mile to partner with institutions like the Nassau Community College, who are educating and training future union members and Long Island workforce of tomorrow. Just this week, we learned that they've launched their first one-of-a-kind pilot program to help out new minorities, women, and veteran entrepreneurs within our labor community and start building their business. As we say in labor, actions speak louder than words, and the Sands have done much more, and they've shown us. That's why we believe this will be a positive net for our community and for Long Island and the labor movement. Thank you so much.
Louis Vasquez, LIHCC, NHCCH. But please tell me what all those initials stand for.
LIHC, Long Island Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and NACCH, the Nassau Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and Health. First of all, thank you for all of us, thank you for listening to us. I think one of the things that we're in favor, I'm in favor, and my chamber and my board are in favor of this transfer of the lease. The reason being is, we feel that, for the first time many years, Latinos have been included, Hispanic-Americans into the process. And we hope that a lot of the promises that have been made by Sands Casino Resort are kept up too. So with faith in the unions that are, they do an excellent job, I have to give them a hand. I want to make sure that we say, we're here, we're present, and we'd love to be part of it, so we can make sure it's a safe haven for all people of Nassau County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Allison O'Brien-Silva.
My name is Allison O'Brien-Silva. I live in Manhasset with my husband and three daughters, but I grew up in East Meadow, a stone's throw from the Coliseum. I come forward in vehement opposition to the Sands taking over the lease of the hub, and I urge you to vote no next week on the lease transfer. The county has swirled over what to do with the hub for decades. Why rush this idea through without first vetting it with the community? In his speech last night, Executive Blakeman said he wouldn't move forward without community support. You need more than this forum tonight to hear from the community. Most don't even know this meeting is even happening. Delay your vote until the county can hold a formal opportunity to weigh in and actually publicize it. When I was working in consulting, we made sure our clients got thorough answers on important questions before embarking on any project, let alone a big capital project. Has this committee or... Has this committee or other parts of the county government conducted independent market research on if there's even a market for a project like this? Have you run independent multi-year models of the long-term economic effect? Have you done environmental impact and traffic studies? What will happen to the Coliseum? I can tell you, I haven't found one person in the county who I've been calling who can show me anything close to that information. My old consulting firm sure wouldn't advise approving anything without getting those answers. I can tell you, though, what happened to other suburbs who have succumbed to the lure of easy money from a casino. Countless studies have shown that though casinos in suburban areas may bring an economic boost over the first few years, over time, their revenue plummets and they become a drain on the community. Tourists come once or twice, but stop returning, and the bulk of the gambling revenue then comes from the local community. Folks who are struggling the most are the ones who pay the price of living near a casino. Property values decline, social ills, including gambling addictions, unemployment, and crime increase. Casinos keep people drawn into their windowless, timeless caverns. Studies show casino attendees do not engage with the wider community, so surrounding businesses feel no economic gains. Casinos become a regressive tax on the least fortunate among us. Plus, we are already saturated in this downstate with plenty of gambling options. What about reclaiming the land for badly needed outdoor space, attracting growing industries like renewable energy or high tech? What about a project that supports the mental health and well-being of community, of our community, and get highly skilled jobs, rather than one that fosters a gambling addiction and related social ills? I know the unions are here to tell you that they want to work and they support this, but guess what? They will build whatever you guys approve of. It doesn't have to be a casino. A Sands property of any kind, including a casino, is not the right choice for Nassau County. Do better. Be leaders for the people rather than box checkers for the Sands. Do better. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, Joseph Wadi, VFCW Local 1500.
Thank you, Nassau County Planning Commissioner. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I would first like to introduce myself and share that both I and the union members we represent are very excited about the prospect, about the prospect of Sands building an integrated resort here in Nassau County. My name is Joe Wadi, and I am the Recorder and Executive Vice President at UFCW Local 1500. And I am joined by my President, Rob Newell, and my Secretary-Treasurer, Ali Wadi, and a bunch of our staff members here with us. It's a very important deal for us to come out for this tonight. We have all walks of labor here tonight, from the building trades to the electricians, Teamsters, the SEA, it could go on and on and on. You may know us as the United Food and Commercial Workers Union Local 1500, and if you know that, then you probably know that, among other things, we are New York's largest grocery worker union, and we are headquartered right here in Nassau County. In fact, you could almost see our headquarters in this, in this picture right here, all right? Merrick and Stewart Avenues. UFCW Local 1500, what you should also know is that UFCW also stands for the United Food and Coffee Shop Workers and the Urban Farming and Crop Workers Union Local 1500. And 1500 is also known as United Food Cart Worker Union, as we represent coffee and food cart workers in New York City. I could go on and on, but in the essence of time, I'll tell you that Local 1500 represents over 16,000 members in the retail, food production, and food service industries. And the common denominator in all of my acronyms earlier is the word worker. That's what we're about, and that's what's most important to us: good jobs. Not just jobs, but good jobs. At Local 1500, we believe that every building in New York State should be built union. At Local 1500, we also believe that after it's built union, that those businesses should also continue to be union, and that is what Sands has committed to here. We always struggle to find locations for our union to have events like our Shop Stewart Seminar. We do it in Queens every year. This is a perfect opportunity for us to do something right home here in Nassau County, right in our backyard, literally, walking distance from our office, and we are extremely encouraged about this, this project, and we just want you to know that UFCW Local 1500 is in full support of it. Thank you very much.
Nadia, oh, this is going to be tough on me. I'm not the, H D U B N Y C Z Y J. Okay. Someone help with the mic for that. Okay. And help her with the phone.
Hi, my name is Nadia Holabnichi.
Wow, you pronounce that much better than I could ever.
No, there's no rhyme or reason to it. There's no rhyme or reason. My name is Nadia Holabnichi, and I'm resident of Flor Park. Nearly eight years ago, I was one of the organizers opposing the proposed casino at Belmont Park. The proposal by Nassau OTB was to operate 1,000 video lottery terminals in an effort to draw revenue for the county. This plan had no vision, and the site was surrounded by private homes, small businesses, and many public schools. There was token community input and no genuine sense of responsibility or investment in the community by Nassau OTB. It was going to be an ill-conceived cash cow for Nassau County. Despite my history, I am here to support the proposed project by Las Vegas Sands. Yes, there is a casino, but it is less than 10% of the entire $4 billion project. This project has vision and innovation that includes communities of Nassau County, but it also acknowledges the impact it will have and embraces its social responsibilities. I am most humbled to have been invited to participate in the community meetings that have gathered stakeholders from the surrounding communities. These people represent various interests and causes. They express their very valid and proven concerns for their communities and the potential impact of this development. In turn, Las Vegas Sands has not only heard and acknowledged the concerns, but are also working to provide mitigation and benefits to the neighborhoods from these very issues. I'm also an honored member of the Workforce Working Group. This smaller group is composed of community leaders, directors of not-for-profits, and representatives of marginalized communities, including, and important to highlight, including the disabled. Their collective expertise is mind-blowing, and they are forthright in expressing the needs of their constituents, not only for jobs, but also careers with a clear path for success and all the necessary supports to get there, and Las Vegas Sands has not shied away. The Las Vegas Sands is proving to be a good neighbor with good faith. The project is smart, innovative, and inclusive. I am confident that the Las Vegas Sands Entertainment Complex will be an asset to Nassau County and Long Island. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Remas, Marie Remas, and Jonja. Where's John? Oh, can someone reposition? Last call for Marie Remas. Okay. Next. Marquise Hightower. Oh, Marie? Okay. Your name and address.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I've been a resident of Uniondale for the last 30 years. I, you guys are sitting with the power. There are certain things that come that should be a no from the get-go. Right there from the Coliseum, we have Hofstra University, we have Nassau Community College, we got Kellenberg Memorial High School, we have Uniondale High School, and we have the Uniondale Elementary School. Plus, on the premises, we have the Sloan-Kettering Hospital. If they're going to come to put some business, fine. If they want to put a hotel, fine, but a casino have no place there, because the kids are young people, so they don't have the maturity that I have and you have. So what are we telling them? Go to school, and then we're finished, to study so hard and come to see if they can become a millionaire overnight? That's what we're telling them. We're putting it right there for them. Plus, the traffic on Nassau is almost impossible. Right in the middle of the road, how are you guys going to put a casino there? We're not talking about the business. We're not talking about the entertainment. We're not talking about the restaurant. We're talking about the casino. Right when Las Vegas Sands come, you guys should say, take that out and come back. That's the way it should be. By the way, the union, I am a union member, but what they're doing is a disservice, because they're just coming to say, yes, there will be jobs, but how long is that job will be? How long the job is going to be? And then when you bring gamble, we've all grown, we're not, we were not born yesterday. We know what gambling may bring. You see what's happening with the marijuana now? They're opening up marijuana. They can go ahead and buy it. It's legal. Now, it's a big problem in the city of New York, because they, once you got that, people come to rob them. Last week, there were three centers that were selling marijuana. The police stood up and out of, they don't even know what to say. They say, what can we say? So my point is, guys, be responsible. We blame the young generation for everything. We call them lazy. We call them this. We call them that. I agree. I agree. I got one son, too, but on the other hand, we, the adults in the room, sometime we do misled them. We do that all the time. I don't think you guys should put a casino there for them to go and be tempted to be a millionaire. Thank you much.
Marquise Hightower, Smart, Local 28.
Hello, my name is Marquise Hightower, and I came from Program Opportunity, Long Island, and I'm now a part of Local 28 Sheet Metal Workers Union. And I'm from Hempstead. I know the area. I've lived there all my life, and I believe that the casino would be a great thing. It'll give a lot of job opportunities for the people who don't have them, and it also locks me in with working instead of, you know, being out of work and lost. I got a family to feed, just like everybody else has a family to feed. I believe that with the Sands Casino coming into place, it would put a lot of job opportunities. Construction workers would have a job. Also, the workers that are coming and work at the Sands Casino when it is finally done, the restaurants and everything else. That's really it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pearl Jacobs, Nostrom Garden Civic Association. Pearl Jacobs. Nostrom Garden Civic Association.
So the major concern here is the adverse effects that a casino within close proximity of thousands of students would have on our youth. Here in Nassau County, in the greater Long Island area, our youth are struggling with opioid addiction, post-COVID depression, alcohol, and marijuana abuse, among other addictions. Many colleges, universities, and schools nearby, they were mentioned before. I'm not going to mention them again, and high schools as well. These schools are, every one of these educational institutions, they range from a five-minute walk to a 10-minute drive of Mitchell Field. How is this, how is that going to affect our future leaders and members of society? Placing a casino in such close proximity to our youth would expose our youth to gambling addiction, a progressive addiction that can result in psychological, physical, and social repercussions. Given these struggles, our youth do not need to be exposed to risk factors that could potentially derail them from an academic path to one of a destructive and life-suppressive addictive one. Concerning the environment, impacts several, concerning the environmental impact, several nearby roadways are the most dangerous roads in New York State: Hempstead Turnpike, Merrick Road, Jericho Turnpike, and Meadowbrook Parkway. Having a casino with no improvements on these roads will only exasperate the dangers. How safe will pedestrians be? Hempstead Turnpike ranks highest as the most dangerous roadways for pedestrians as well. Hempstead Turnpike ranks in the top five every year as New York State's most dangerous roadway. Concerning quality of life, casinos typically are open 24 hours, seven days, 365 days a year. This affords opportunity for certain crimes: drugs, prostitution, theft, extortion, stolen cards, gun violence, human trafficking, and many other. It goes on and on. Why would Nassau County want this? Our Nassau County Police Department are currently burdened with a plethora of post-COVID criminal activity. A casino is a quick revenue source that will not sustain Nassau County. Let's put something at this site that would complement our prestigious educational institutions like biotech and research centers. Senator Chuck Schumer recently stated at the Long Island Association meeting, "Ongoing research, semiconductors, medicine, and physics can result in many sustainable jobs on Long Island." We have the opportunity, that opportunity right here at the Nassau Hub. And as a postscript, I want to say, Uniondale is a disenfranchised community. We don't receive the tax base that we generate. We are left out, and a casino is not going to help us. We need to help ourselves, and our elected officials need to do their jobs and be more careful with the money they spend of our tax budget. Thank you.
Matthew Calaris, Local 580. Can excuse me if I mispronounce. Your name?
Kalehas.
Kalehas, okay.
How you doing? My name is Matthew Kalehas. I'm a graduate of Long Island Opportunity, Local 580 now, and I'm a resident of Uniondale, and oh, sorry. I said I'm a part of Local 580 now. I'm a resident of Uniondale, and I would love to work near my house, you know? I grew up there. Just love to see something new in the community that we can all have fun with and enjoy, and that's pretty much it.
Grant Newberger, Building Trades.
Grant Newberger, Nassau Suffolk Building Trades. In an effort to keep everything nice and short, I don't want to repeat, you know, what my brothers and sisters in labor have said. I will just say that Nassau Suffolk Building Trades represent the 36 different unions in the construction industry here on Long Island, with a total membership of about 65,000, all local members. I will say that Sands has been the most pro-union and most communicative, excuse me, communicative developer that I've dealt with in my time at the building trades, and from the very beginning, they have committed to a project labor agreement that'll create more, that'll create nearly 10,000 construction jobs on this one site. Again, that will all be our local jobs with the Nassau Suffolk Building Trades. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Joseph Parisi, Council of East Metal Community Organizations.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Parisi. I represent the Council of East Metal Community Organizations, which is a civic group. We are in favor of the process continuing. We would like the exploration process to continue along, to just examine and vet every area of importance, not only to our building trades, but also to the various issues that the community has raised, for example, environmental. What I have personally found is that the representatives of the Sands are very willing to work with the community. So from that perspective, I'm encouraged and would like to see the process continue, because I think a proper vetting of all the issues that concern everybody is extremely important, and if we continue the vetting process, I think we can arrive at a solution that works for all. So with that, I thank you for the time that you've given me to speak, and let's hope that we can end up with something that will be great for the hub, which has been many years in the making, and I, on a personal level, say that it's time to do something great there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Helen, Helen Matinas from CASA, Community Association of Stewart Avenue. Is that what it's? Yes. I said it. Okay, good. I got one. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yes, we're a civic association on the north end of East Meadow School District. I am here tonight to request that the county allow this process to move forward. Sands has been meeting with the community, and a lot of people don't know that, and it is very important to continue to hear that plan. To hear their plan, I'm sorry. If a license is issued by New York State, it is equally important that the communities which surround this property become part of the process. This is in order to shape the best possible development needed for Nassau County. We are desperately in need for real money to upgrade our outdated infrastructure, especially at this property. If Sands keeps to their word, we will have the first developer that will create a destination place second to none. In which case, please vote to transfer the contract from RXR to Sands. That is just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you for your reminder. James P. Skinner, East Meadow Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is James Skinner. I'm the president of the East Meadow Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to keep this short. I believe that the transfer should move to Las Vegas Sands, and we look forward in continuing our conversations with APE Las Vegas Sands. Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you for the brevity. Jamal Higgins?
My name is actually Brian Nygro.
Okay.
I'm the business representative for Sheet Metal Workers Local 28.
Oh, okay.
Jamal had to leave, so I'm up here for him. I think I'm going to keep it real short. I'd just like to comment, there's a lot of community groups here and unions, obviously, and we're talking about them like they're two separate entities, but it's important to remember that labor is part of the community. We're, we're all living in the same area and, and, you know, trying to get to the same places. So, unions here trying to get jobs, not only, not only for a project in the short term, but in the long term as well, to keep our children here. I have comments here from Jamal, who is a, he's a Uniondale resident. I think, could I just enter the comments to the record to keep it short?
Yes, yes.
All right.
You can give it to John. Thank you very much, we'll make that part of the record. Yes, if anyone has any written statements that they want to incorporate in the record, we're happy to take it. I'll read one later that we received an email from. William Cassidy, IATSC Local 1 and 52.
Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing us. It's a privilege for us to be here. I am William Cassidy. I represent Stagehand Local 1, IATSC, the oldest entertainment union in the country, in the world. We've been around since 1885. We do shows from the west side of Manhattan to, from Madison Square Garden now to Montauk Point. We know our business, we're like the Building Trades, we don't have accidents, we're very, very rarely. And we have a, we have a structured workforce, we know what we're doing, and we're accountable, like the Building Trades, like the other unions. We will be in there on the building, but we'll be there on the running of the theater and the convention center, we hope. And I might add, that theater, I just heard tonight, it could be 7,500 seats. Can you imagine a Broadway-style theater half an hour or an hour from your house? And the ancillary benefits to the different businesses around this project are unsurpassed. There'll be gas stations, other restaurants, and there'll be people working all over, all over. And I want to get to the working. I, I would suggest to you, there's no greater benefit to a community, to a kid, to a minority kid, anybody, than to have a real good job or a job with a future. I remember when I first wanted to get to work, and I finally did, I said, thank you, thank you, God, and I did. And I think a lot of us here can say that, most of us can. It doesn't matter if you're white collar, blue collar, no collar. Work is a virtue, and it's, it's unsurpassed. It heals, it promotes family cohesion, it pays taxes, keeps people, especially the young people, keeps them on the straight and narrow. And I'd like to talk a little bit about the Sands. It's a publicly traded corporation. They do projects like this all over the world. And they're going to put $4.5 billion into this, and that doesn't include the ancillary businesses, private sector money, I can't stress that enough. It's not coming from the government, it's simply not. They'll have people working there, they'll pay taxes. And also, in terms of the convention center, we work in Javits. And Javits is a great place, but it's hard to get there, back and forth. Anybody who exhibits there or drives there knows this. This convention center out here will be open, it'll have time and space and bookings to accommodate new shows. And lastly, I grew up on, in Merrick, on Frankel Boulevard. I loved Nassau then, I love it now. This is a world-class, first-class county, and it's a jewel of suburban counties. And this is a jewel of a project that's beautiful. You've seen the renderings. It'll be nothing but good for us, very good.
I think this board just has to go on record is, we've seen no renderings, we have no idea what that gentleman is talking about, it's convention centers, theaters, so he's addressing us like we were part of, or we've reviewed these plans, we've seen nothing.
The, the, no, no, we're not, sir.
No, we're not, we don't want to get, we just want to put on record that this, this board.
Right. The only thing is that's before.
Mr. Council O'Brien, I'll address that, the reason why, I don't want anyone to walk away with an impression that we're ill-informed.
I know it's probably a disappointment, but the only thing before the commission tonight is the assignment, the potential assignment of the lease. So, I realize the emotion, the community both ways, but that's, that's the sole issue before us.
Mr. O'Brien, thank you for that clarification. I think some other speakers were under that misimpression also. Whatever renderings have been made public have been in Newsday and other publications. Or there's a website, I understand also, I looked on a website. So, next is, and you've been a great audience, we're moving it along, we got a lot more to go, and we may have to take a break for the stenographer. You'll tell us when, she's been going since 6 o'clock, so around 8 o'clock, we may take a break for the stenographer, and we may need a break also. Okay, but we'll, we'll try to stay with this, to move it along, with everyone's help, because you've been great.
My name is Sebastian Mazota, I'm a resident of East Meadow. Mr. Reed, I believe your name is? You say you have no pictures of what this project is going to look like?
That's not what.
Sir, that's not, he's, Mr. Sack, Commissioner Sack was, what he's saying, that's not before us. The only thing that's before us is the potential assignment of the lease.
We've reviewed nothing of, nothing of this project.
Right.
As a board, that's not our job.
You may have, you may have seen it in other places, but that's not what this hearing is about tonight.
The point I'm trying to make with respect is, I haven't seen anything either. I live not too far from this project that you gentlemen are about to perhaps approve.
No, we're approving a transfer of the lease. And I, let me just clarify, because I think this is critical. Mr. O'Brien mentioned, and I think Mr. Walsh mentioned, and Josh mentioned also, the process will be ongoing, it goes to the town of Hempstead, who has the jurisdiction over that part of the process.
Sir, I'd like to say something if I, if I might.
Sure, sure, go right ahead.
Okay. I, I think, what do they say, a fait de comple? In other words, this is already, because I'm hearing a lot of, the Sands reached out to various people and whatnot, so I guess the decision is made.
Sir, sir, please, please don't say that. This is an open hearing, and everybody came here, everybody came here tonight believing they'd get a fair shake, number one.
I did too, sir.
Okay, and that's what's going to happen, and at the end, the comments, as I explained early on, the comments are going to go back to us, back to us. The county legislature will act.
Right.
Or maybe not act, and then the town of Hempstead has the final say.
Okay. All I'm trying to say is, we have members of our family that are union, God bless them all, okay? We have members of our family that belong to the police department, God bless them all, all right? I have seen nothing. I live in East Meadow, I'm not that far from this project. My concern is the traffic, the environment, and what a casino has the potential to bring into a community like ours. We have, unfortunately, a lot going on in this county right now. And my concern is for our children. My wife and I were born and raised on Long Island, we have children, we have grandchildren. We would like nothing better than to see them remain here and grow here. That would be our goal. But what concerns me is you guys, I think, are being moonied by the money, forgive me. And, I mean, if we could put something on that property, and I remember when Ed Mangano was county executive, we had a big meeting at the East Meadow High School, I was there, and they were going to do this, and they were going to do that, and nothing got done. All I'm saying is, what could we do, okay? Without the casino, but putting something of quality on that property that benefits everybody. That's all I'm trying to say. And some of the, some of the speakers, much more eloquent than I am, and I apologize, I don't have anything prepared. I just came here to voice my opinion as a resident of Nassau County, okay? I want to see this county thrive. I want to see my kids and my grandkids stay here. And I, I don't want to see fentanyl, I don't want to see drugs, I don't want to see crime, okay? I don't want to see any of that. So, whatever can be done in this project, minus the casino, the casino, I'm all for that. I am all for that, but the casino concerns me. Thank you.
Matthew Furlong, Plumbers Local 200. Matthew, you got, you got applause before you even spoke, you brought a big crowd out.
Good evening, Nassau County Planning Commission. My name is Matthew Furlong, I live in Wantagh. I'm currently a first-year apprentice of the Local, of Local 200. I think the Sands project is good for the county, provides jobs for the future middle-class workers, because Sands promised to build the project with union labor, and also promised to create thousands of union jobs when the job is complete. That's all I have to say.
Edward McNamara, Ron Cockemo Chamber of Commerce. It's not exactly Nassau County.
No, I was going to say, Ed McNamara from Ron Cockemo, New York, I'm the president of the Ron Cockemo Chamber, and a member of the Suffolk Alliance Chamber of Commerce. We work with our brothers and sisters in Nassau. No, I'm not lost. This is a regional project, and, you know, I'm kind of surprised when I hear that you guys didn't get any information, because the Sands in New York reached out to the business community and reached out to the unions. And what they're saying right now, I think that on both sides, they're just saying, we want to start this project. And I think that's important, that we all know that, that there's no decision being made, it's not a fait accompli. I could see how people might think that. Let me tell you, the business owners in Nassau and Suffolk are concerned. Wall Street Journal had an article, 25% of businesses will be gone in five years. That's a fact. Now, it sounds bad when you hear that, but it's even worse, because it's tax revenue, it's jobs. And so, we can't just sit back and wait for that 25% to leave and then react. All the ideas we have here are good, the casino is concerned, I can, I understand that. And so, we have to take Sands at their word, that they're going to have, between 75 and 80% of the businesses are going to be involved in this project. You know, we don't want the businesses from Las Vegas building this casino, we want our unions building it, we want our business owners building it, our companies. And we're going to have to address the serious concerns of the fentanyl, the drug abuse, the, these are real concerns. And so, we can address both of these, I believe. And why am I here? Because Nassau Suffolk is a region, it's like salt and pepper, you know, it just rolls off our tongue, Nassau Suffolk. And they did reach out to both Nassau and Suffolk, so I'm just asking you guys to move forward, there is no final decision. And that includes from the Sands, and they were very clear about that, the procurement. One of the things they did that I thought was great was, not only did they show how to do the procurement, but they're showing people how to fill it out. So, if you're a minority business owner, or you're a woman and you've never done this, you've never been exposed, you think, I can't do this, my business never did this, they're actually showing people step by step how to do it. So, the thing I'm saying to you is that it should be considered. We got to keep them at their word, that they're going to have 75 and 80% of the businesses in Long Island doing this project. And lastly, our concerns, the social concerns we have are real, and they ought to be addressed also. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming from Suffolk. Luis Mendez, Empowering Young Professionals of Long Island.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman, Mr. Third Vice Chairman, and the rest of the board. My name is Luis Mendez. Mr. Greenfield, you and I go back all the way to 2002 when we served this county. I'm the former Deputy Director of the Nassau County Office of Minority Affairs. I'm a founder of Empowering Young Professionals of Long Island. I served in the past at the East Meadow Fire Department as a fire medic, proudly, and I live in the northern sector of East Meadow, right behind Eisenhower Park, also known as Salisbury, it's Westbury zip code, East Meadow School District. I don't usually come out unless the issue is real. And this is a real issue, and you have a responsibility. I am here in support of this project moving forward to the next phase for three reasons. I'm a father of triplets who graduated at schools in Nassau County, I'm a father of five kids, a good old Irish family, four girls and a boy. My family came from the union side, so there are brothers and sisters here, so I'm very glad that that happens, but I want to make sure they look like me in this project, and they look like other African-Americans and South Asians, which I'm sure they have committed to do so, and hopefully will hold them accountable. The reason why I'm here is because there is no dare there in Nassau County. My kids left. Two of them are in South Carolina, one is in Florida, two are still in the state, and I want to be able to keep them. And I'm not talking about jobs that would be of the cleaning kind, I'm talking about accounting jobs, I'm talking about jobs of the high-end paying jobs that casinos usually need. That's an opportunity. More important than that is making sure that through Appendix EE, which you are a county segregated agency, therefore, you have the ability to enforce Appendix EE, which is the law that we put in place in 2006, Local Law 14A, which is the participation of minority contractors in county actions. Therefore, the opportunities will be there along with the state mandates. I have met with the principals of the Sands leading this project. I am meeting on a constant basis with the former governor of the state of New York, Mr. Patterson, to make sure that the MWB components are there. We will house and, and a teaching process at my office at 220 Old Country Road here in Mineola, only 300 steps, to get the procurement process of the opportunities for minorities in Mineola, only 300 steps, to get the procurement process of the opportunities for minorities involved. More important than that, I am bringing two restaurant groups of the minority kind, to bid for the opportunities to participate in themed restaurants inside the, the complex. And so the opportunities are plenty, but this is just the first step moving forward. I am in full support, along with my membership of young professionals, who are actively seeking opportunities in the county of Nassau. Good seeing you again, by the way.
Louis, so good to see you, and hear your passion. You're always a very passionate person, and a good friend. Gary Johnson, NAACP New York.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Gary Johnson, I am the NAACP New York State Conference Chair for Economic Development. The lease transfer proposal involving the Sands Casino, along with future developments in Offshore Wind, are two of the most transformational developments for Long Island for the next generation. We have seen generations, particularly recent graduates, leave Long Island for other opportunities in other states, and that has a negative impact on Long Island and drives up prices, not stabilizes them. But we've had concerns. Meeting with the Sands leadership team, we voiced those concerns, and felt reassured that they were serious about their commitments. Las Vegas Sands has a reputation internationally of making agreements with their communities and living up to or exceeding those agreements. How do I know this? I know this because I did the research. I researched their agreements they have in Macau, where to get their licenses renewed every 10 years, they have to commit to new agreements with their communities. Sands has committed to addressing our communities' concerns, including gambling and other concerns. But this is beyond the talented building trades seated behind me. This is also about the pre-development work that professional Long Island firms will have an opportunity to participate in before the first shovel goes in the ground. And through the construction with the PLA, it offers opportunities for thousands of construction workers, and as importantly, the thousands who will work here, not in New York City, not in New Jersey, not in Connecticut. The visitors and Long Islanders who will enjoy this integrated resort, development, and casino will be an economic development engine for Long Island. Concerns have to be addressed. We must have agreements that are enforceable. We must have dialogue with the community in terms of traffic, in terms of environment, in terms of education. We will have those concerns addressed, and therefore, I support us moving forward to the next stage of this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shelley Brasley. Excuse me, yes, sir, sir. You got to sit down, you'll be called upon when your name comes up. Please, no, we've had great decorum tonight, please refrain from any outbursts. We're running a public hearing, we have a stenographer, we have to ask you to leave if you're going to continue like that. Shelley Brasley. You know, that's me, okay, thank you. Garden City.
Yes, I'm from Garden City, yes.
That's what it says.
Thank you, thank you for having me. I want to express my solidarity to the union, people behind me, my family's always been union, I was in the union when I was younger, so I appreciate all the efforts they do. Notwithstanding that, I do have a question, and it relates to the process, and it talks to what Hofstra mentioned, people from Hofstra mentioned a little while ago, this is a four-and-a-half-billion-dollar process that's going to go on to build something. We don't know what that something is, we don't know the size of it, we don't know the shape of it, we don't know how many floors it has, we don't know the square feet, we don't know the parking, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know, we don't know. I think it's premature, I think it's terribly premature to advances to OPEC, OPEC, excuse me, OSPEC, I think it's terribly premature to refer it there without this information, and making it transparent to the public beforehand, before it's referred. I think it's, without having information, we have nothing. I think it's a great idea to do something, but we don't have anything. We don't have anything but, but an image, and an image doesn't work for me. Secondly, I attended a, a, here, a hearing, I attended a meeting last evening, and it was put on by some folks in Garden City, but the speaker was from, from Hofstra, and her background was, she was an ex-FBI agent, and she was head of the Suffolk County Police. And she took us through chapter and verse of what the impact of Jakes 58 was on police. And it, it's just staggering to me. 225, 230 cases of human trafficking that I identified, that they were able to rescue. I think if I remember correctly, 400, 400% increase in DWIs, crime, larcenies, it just goes on and on and on. That's around Jakes 58, that, that they know of, and that they recorded, and that's in the 22, 21, 2019 period. So I think there's some real issues there. The strain on our community, the strain on our resources, we don't have enough water for our own people right now. Are we going to put something in the middle of Nassau County that's going to strain it further? Air pollution is terrible, there's a study going on right now by the New York State DEC that says that the communities of color, the communities of disadvantage, in Hempstead, in Uniondale, in Newcastle, in Westbury are under attack by our poor air, we're going to add more, more junk air to it. It seems like this stuff needs to be done beforehand, before we advance this to, to OSPEC. Last but not least, I think the process of, of, of doing this is, is way too fast. I know Sands has got a lot of money, I know they got a lot more money than anybody in this room, and that gives them strength. We also have strength in the people who, in the community. I know Garden City has voted unanimously to oppose the, oppose the casino. I don't take a position right now, one way or the other, because I have no information, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, not to engage, but were you here at the start of the meeting?
I was not, I was, I was outside, I'm sorry.
Mr. O'Brien, our attorney, explain the process, and why and how we're here at this time, and with the issue at hand.
I did hear, I, just in, in respect, I did hear that, Mr. Greenfield.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, I understood it, but I think it's, with all due respect, I think there's a flaw in the, in the logic, if you will, but I understand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I want everyone, if nothing else, to leave here, understanding the process. Some of the speakers seem to have lost some of the value of what we're doing here, and the task that we're given as a Nassau County Planning Commission, to make a recommendation upon, after hearing from OSPEC to the legislature. Okay, Sharon Cardy Johnson, EAC Network.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Cardy Johnson, and I represent EAC Network, non-for-profit organization that is a staple in Nassau County, so is Suffolk and the city. My position here tonight is just to reflect on the job opportunities that will be given to young adults, or to anyone in Nassau County. I think that when we think about the prospect of having jobs available to Nassau County residents, is one that is so well-needed. And for young adults that maybe have not gone to college, or even have gone to college, and coming home without the prospects of employment, it is daunting. And so, when we close our eyes and we start to look at what does this mean for us, let's think about the prospect of a young person being able to gain gainful employment, to sustain both themselves and family if they have to contribute to that family. So what I would like to say is, let's think about the broader picture, the wider lens of employment, sustainable employment, and having our young people being able to sustain themselves. Thank you.
How's our stenographer doing? Do you want a break? One more speaker, then we'll break, a brief break. We, we've had a great meeting so far, I don't want to break the momentum, and I want to keep it going. All right, John? All right. Mariano Ugaldi, Uniondale Chamber of Commerce. Sorry, Fay.
It's okay. Good evening, my name is Mariano Ugaldi, I'm the president of the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce, you are close, it's difficult, don't worry. I just wanted to read out this, the following statement. "After careful consideration and extensive discussion, the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce stands in support of the integrated resort entertainment center proposed by Sands at the Nassau Hub property in Uniondale. While we had profound concerns in the beginning, we have since been impressed with the Sands' commitment to work with our local community. They have demonstrated that they will, that they will provide accessible paths to contract procurement opportunities that will benefit our local small businesses, our community as a whole. We look forward to what, what looks to come, and encouraged by the positive momentum towards finally establishing a world-class development project in Nassau County." Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you.
If anybody has a question about process, I, I'm not going to take a break, but I'll come out into the audience, and you can ask me whatever questions you want about process.
12. 12, 12, that's what I just, I got 12. And 10. So we should be done. All right. Decide now. Right. Okay. All right. All right. Mariano Ugaldi, Uniondale Chamber of Commerce. Sorry, Fay.
It's okay. Good evening, my name is Mariano Ugaldi, I'm the president of the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce, you are close, it's difficult, don't worry. I just wanted to read out this, the following statement. "After careful consideration and extensive discussion, the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce stands in support of the integrated resort entertainment center proposed by Sands at the Nassau Hub property in Uniondale. While we had profound concerns in the beginning, we have since been impressed with the Sands' commitment to work with our local community. They have demonstrated that they will, that they will provide accessible paths to contract procurement opportunities that will benefit our local small businesses, our community as a whole. We look forward to what, what looks to come, and encouraged by the positive momentum towards finally establishing a world-class development project in Nassau County." Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you.
If anybody has a question about process, I, I'm not going to take a break, but I'll come out into the audience, and you can ask me whatever questions you want about process.
12. 12, 12, that's what I just, I got 12. And 10. So we should be done. All right. Decide now. Right. Okay. All right. All right. Mariano Ugaldi, Uniondale Chamber of Commerce. Sorry, Fay.
It's okay. Good evening, my name is Mariano Ugaldi, I'm the president of the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce, you are close, it's difficult, don't worry. I just wanted to read out this, the following statement. "After careful consideration and extensive discussion, the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce stands in support of the integrated resort entertainment center proposed by Sands at the Nassau Hub property in Uniondale. While we had profound concerns in the beginning, we have since been impressed with the Sands' commitment to work with our local community. They have demonstrated that they will, that they will provide accessible paths to contract procurement opportunities that will benefit our local small businesses, our community as a whole. We look forward to what, what looks to come, and encouraged by the positive momentum towards finally establishing a world-class development project in Nassau County." Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you.
If anybody has a question about process, I, I'm not going to take a break, but I'll come out into the audience, and you can ask me whatever questions you want about process.
12. 12, 12, that's what I just, I got 12. And 10. So we should be done. All right. Decide now. Right. Okay. All right. All right. Mariano Ugaldi, Uniondale Chamber of Commerce. Sorry, Fay.
It's okay. Good evening, my name is Mariano Ugaldi, I'm the president of the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce, you are close, it's difficult, don't worry. I just wanted to read out this, the following statement. "After careful consideration and extensive discussion, the Uniondale Chamber of Commerce stands in support of the integrated resort entertainment center proposed by Sands at the Nassau Hub property in Uniondale. While we had profound concerns in the beginning, we have since been impressed with the Sands' commitment to work with our local community. They have demonstrated that they will, that they will provide accessible paths to contract procurement opportunities that will benefit our local small businesses, our community as a whole. We look forward to what, what looks to come, and encouraged by the positive momentum towards finally establishing a world-class development project in Nassau County." Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours. Not only her work here, I, I just don't want it to go unnoticed. She does a great job all the time, gives us great transcripts. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break, 8:15, we're going to come back. We got to be respectful, and we want to thank, let's have a round of applause for our stenographer. She's been at it for two hours.
So then?
So now?
But she's still in there now. She's back.
All of us to go to a casino. Right in front of law.
So, yeah, we need to pull that. We don't want the governor putting all this house. Who wants that? And just, you know what?
I want to be able to see.
The gannos behind the horse. Oh, she just got out.
She should have been in more. Exactly. Exactly. It's trash. All trash.
All right, can we ask everyone to return to their seats? Intermission is over. Can we have everyone's attention, please? We want to wrap this up before 9 o'clock. We don't want to keep the Union County workers out later than 9 o'clock. We don't want to run up an OT bill. We don't have a budget for it. All right, everybody. You've been a great audience for the first two hours. Let's finish strong. All right. Let the record reflect, we're going back at 8:20. Meta Maradee, Veterans and Taxpayers.
If I can have everyone's attention, please? Hello?
You must be a schoolteacher, the way you do that.
My name is Mida J. Maradee. I've heard more than enough. I've heard more than an ocean. But I haven't heard that the facility, the site, the space, is officially named the Nassau Veterans Memorial Coliseum. It is not the hub. It is not like a piece of property that's being bandied about like a hockey puck. It was supposed to be a site that was supposed to not only memorialize, but to provide a facility and a location for residents of this county, of this region, to be able to come and participate in family-oriented activities and events. But there are those who want to put in a casino. And then there are those who are saying that those who are against a casino have the NIMBY mentality. No, it's not to say they have NIMBY, but they have the "we are tired of it being just in our backyard" mentality. There are those that say that it's going to create great jobs. The average salary, and whoever's saying boo, I'm good with it, baby. The average salary is about $39,000. We pay the second highest property taxes in Nassau County. So if we create all those jobs, and I'm cute from the front and back, baby, so I'm keeping it moving. They play that scenario. So that where are these young people that you want to claim are going to stay here when the parents whose basement they would have to live in because they can't afford a mortgage have to be forced to leave because the taxes will get too high? The crime will get too bad? And for those that don't think it happens, the state and the county with the largest gambling problem is Clark County in the state of Nevada. The facts. We're not saying that we don't need something in that space. But when we have veterans, 11% to 20% of veterans in a given year face post-traumatic stress disorder. How are we going to celebrate and commemorate our veterans when the bells and whistles at most casinos are detrimental to their health? We are fighting now veterans committing suicide or attempting to commit suicide at 44 per day. We're talking about procurement. I am a person of color. My great uncle and his brothers, my cousins, laid the foundation for the building we are standing in, one of the first minority businesses. I'm the former vice president for the New York-New Jersey Minority Purchasing Council. People of color don't need anybody to tell us about procurement. The county needs lessons in procurement because they continue to underrepresent people of color in all services. This county, two weeks ago, it is $3.3 billion budget, and I'm going to wrap it up because you let others go past three minutes. They just passed the budget. Not you. This county passed a $3.3 billion budget. Where is everybody then with the construction jobs that have gone to waste in this county? $22 million was allocated for gambling addiction. And those experts that spoke before the county to get an increase said that was not going to be enough. Let the county executives show up in Uniondale to speak to those residents who are going to be directly impacted. Let the Sands not hold us hostage because we don't want a casino, per se. We want an entertainment facility. We want a convention center. We want credible jobs. But make it available and accessible for all of us, but most importantly, our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you for your good points. Monica Keely, Garden City.
Hi, my name is Monica Keely, and I do live in Garden City. I am not here to represent anybody tonight. I'm just a person. And I didn't prepare any remarks, so please forgive me if I run on a bit or I stumble. I'd like to point out for the record that this room was packed with union people. And I have nothing against union people, and I like employment and jobs and income, and I want all those things for Nassau County residents. But anybody watching a videotape of tonight would think that 95% of the residents of Nassau County want this casino, when I think it's maybe 95% of the residents don't want this casino, especially after they learn about it. I understand that Nassau County sees tax dollars, jobs, employment. All those things look wonderful. An increase in tax revenues for the county, that's a win-win for Blakeman. What else will we have increases in? Gambling addiction rates, bankruptcy rates, home foreclosure rates in surrounding communities, increases in domestic violence, increases in drug trafficking. Forget car traffic. Increases in human trafficking. Increases in alcohol, fatal alcohol-related traffic accidents. Increases in grand larceny, and I won't go into smaller property claims. They don't matter. What matters is the human cost that will result from this casino. Whatever we gain in terms of money, and there's plenty of money going around to different groups who seem to be very well-informed about tonight's meeting, but not regular people. Whatever we gain in terms of money will be paid for many times over in human cost. Please, Bruce Blakeman, if you are listening, please do not allow this to happen. You don't want this awful idea to become your negative legacy in Nassau County. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Thomas. I'm a resident of Uniondale. And I often, I was often told that happens in Vegas, stays in Vegas. Unfortunately, Vegas seemed to want to spread its wings. I am a somewhat fun gambler. I would go to Bilt. I would go to... I went to Vegas a few times. And one of the things I've noticed is that I just don't stay in the hotels. I walk around. Gambling brings lots of problems. The sad part of putting a casino between the colleges and the high schools. Everybody talks about the young people. What do you think young people are going to do? How many of them do you think would think of cutting school and going to gamble? There are other means through which that space can be developed. We elect you guys here to think of ways in which the spaces may be developed. Look around the United States and the world and see what shortages there be. Right now, there's a shortage of nurses. Expand the community. There is a cancer center there, and you're going to put a gambling center right next to it. It's interesting. When would we start using what we are supposed to use to think? To make it happen for the community? We talk about our young people. Our young people, we push them to make great grades and to go on to great colleges, to come back to work in a casino. Isn't that interesting? You talked about the guys from the unions. There's jobs and jobs and working jobs. From what I was told, it's 12,000 jobs temporarily and 5,000 jobs permanently. What kind of jobs? Cleaning jobs? How many accountants do they need? How many entertainers do they need? Why can't our college expand the educational system that we can get more professional people? Professional people to find real jobs? Please. I was made to understand that tonight we're just talking about the leases. Please, don't give these people a lease. Please. Thank you.
Julie Berger.
My name is Julie Berger. I live in East Meadow, a stone's throw away from the Coliseum. Ironically, I had jury duty yesterday, and I left my house at 8:20, and I had to be right across the street at 8:45. And guess what? I was late. It's crazy, right? That's the traffic. That's the area. That was three lights in a row. Boom, boom, boom. Hem, 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 bank. Memorial Sloan Light, the Starbucks Light, and the Hafner Light. But that's only one thing. The other thing is I'm not part of any of these unions behind me. I am part of a union, but I'm not part of that union. And what I don't understand is I'm here with my neighbors, is I got one text yesterday, which was pretty late, from a group I had never even heard of telling me about this meeting. Obviously, all the other people who were in here and waiting out in the hallway and the parking lot and the whole streets, all knew about this ahead of time. That's very disturbing. That's incredibly disturbing. We want to sign off a lease onto... We want to transfer a lease? Transfer it to me. Either leave the area alone, because really, why do we want to build more stuff? We have so much stuff. Can't we leave anything alone, number one? Or if we have to do something, we should just be putting in pickleball courts. That's what we need. Pickleball courts, because every generation plays. We can unite everybody, and we won't have the crime and the traffic and the negativity related to a casino. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I just... Pickleball, my son-in-law is hooked on that, and you're right. I went to see it last Sunday at all different generations. It's also very good for the orthopedic profession I learned that day. The one thing I want everyone to know here, and it's been touched upon a few times, this was a duly noticed hearing case tonight in accordance with the way we give notification. So I'm not here to debate that. I just want the record to reflect that it was in adherence with the manner in which we notice the case, or any cases. But stop. All right, the attorney will get upset with me. Let's go to the next one. Dan Lloyd. Is Dan Lloyd still here? Not... pass. He's gone? Okay. Next is Andrew Ayody. Minority Millenniums Mac Academy. Is he still here? Gone? Oh, Marvin Amazin, community member. Marvin. Is Marvin still here? No? Okay. Jay Carlos Rivera. Marvin's coming? Okay, come on down. As Bob Barker would say, "Come on down." As Bob Barker would say, "Come on down."
First of all, thank you for having me. I wasn't initially going to speak today. And I still kind of don't know what I'm going to say, just because this is such a heavy topic. When I first heard that there was a casino coming to Uniondale, I was like, oh, nah, there's no way this is happening. But then I listened. And I think that's what we're here to do today, right? Is to listen to...
State your name, please. State your name.
Oh, Marvin Amazin.
Thank you.
I think that's what we're here to do today, right? Is listen. Just listen to what's going on. And not only did I listen, I had the opportunity, the pleasure of actually going down to a prior property that the Sands had owned, and just to see exactly what it was for myself. And when I went down there, it was apparent to me how much of a community partner that Sands was. So I guess I'm standing here in front of you to say that I want us to continue looking into what the Sands is proposing, to see exactly how much of a community partner they can be. Too many times, you know, we shut ourselves off and don't really sit down and consider what is exactly at stake. And I've been listening, and I've heard all of the concerns, every concern, and like everybody has said, it's valid concerns, right? But we can either just argue about it, or talk about the concerns, or we can actually find ways to make this property work for us, right? A lot of people have been saying, you know, that it seems like there's a lot of decisions being made and all of this stuff as well, but if we don't sit down as a community and really try to figure out how we can benefit from something like this, we can be lost. So I just really want us to just really sit down and listen, really listen, and listen for the facts of the matter. Listen to what's really important. And when the time comes, hold people accountable. Because at the end of the day, that's really all that we can do. And if it does show out that, you know, this property is coming, then we have to be prepared as a community. Or we just risk, like Nassau County and the town of Hempstead does, we don't get served. Uniondale usually never gets served. I'm from Uniondale, so we usually never get served. We're one of the most underserved communities out there. You're right, Roosevelt. You know, I said one of the most, one of the most, you know? So we are. So, I mean, if there's an opportunity where we can use this to benefit us, because one of the things I've been hearing is that we want a lot of different things, a lot of different things to come there. But, I mean, I'm still new to a lot of things, right? But there's a certain way of getting things and a certain way of paying for things that, you know, we talk about we want social services, but how do we pay for the social services? Right? So when somebody comes with an opportunity, I don't say that we sit there and we say no, we say no. I say that we listen, and we see how we can potentially benefit as a community, as a community from something like this. So thank you for letting me speak.
Now we'll call Jay Carlos Rivera.
Hello, everyone. My name is Juan Carlos Rivera, and I'm here on behalf of the support of the Nassau Sands project to build the casino. I literally live in Uniondale. It is, what was the saying, a stone's throw away. Literally, I can just walk five minutes and it's right there. Being a resident of Uniondale for all my life, I haven't seen much change. I haven't seen much prosperity. I've been only here, heard of talks of, you know, amounts of taxing and no real completed projects that have actually benefited our community. And I believe this is an opportunity for us to really, this is an opportunity for us to really have implementation of permanent jobs that can, that are promised by Sands but not necessarily haven't been described. And I understand there's a lot of questions and a lot of concerns, but I've personally been in the room with some of the Sands representatives, and they have put many of these concerns to rest with some of the proposals that they come up with. And they are very adamant and serious about addressing the concerns that they have, that we have as a community, especially those are in the close-knit community of Uniondale, as well as the other outer regions. Roosevelt, I mean Roosevelt Freeport, you know, et cetera. And I just believe that there's been so many opportunities that Long Island, I mean Nassau County has overlooked in the past. The one that I look at, that I see as a real failure is, for instance, the windmills that were supposed to be installed in Jones Beach a long time ago, I think it was 10, 15 years ago, and I think that would have made our county, I believe it was, and was energy-free, would have brought a lot of tax income into our community, and it would have helped out our environmental footprint, our carbon footprint. Now, the way that this approach with this casino seems, it just seems a lot different than the other projects I've seen in the past, just considering of their approach and their involvement in the environment, and not just the human environment, but the environmental environment. I'm an environmental engineer, working at JFK, and I deal with, you know, superfund sites and oil spills and things of that nature. So I know they're very concerned with the environmental assessments and dealing with the community and the nature as a totality. So I hope we can really address a lot of the questions and concerns with more meetings like this and more, you know, conferences, hearings of this nature. And I just...
Thank you very much.
...to proceed. All right, thank you.
Okay, next. Michael Anthony Davila.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm a resident of Garden City. I live on Meadow Street, which is a cut-through street that everyone knows is five minutes away from Uniondale and the Nassau Coliseum hub. So this will directly affect my life, which is why I'm here. I recently had a fence put up in my house, which is impossible in Garden City. I paid extra money to do that for the purpose of safety of my children, because I have a Sidewinder house. Long story short, this will make the situation even worse unless Garden City cuts off Boylston, Commander, and Lindbergh to the east of my property, which I do not want them to have to do. Everyone's talking about unions. Where are the unions now? The break is over. It's kind of funny. We all got rubbed out, and now everyone that's a resident gets a real voice, not 80/20, but 50/50, or perhaps 80/20 the other way. Long story short, at the end of the day, unemployment is at 2.3% in Nassau County. Not 7%, not 10%, 2.3%. F-ing Google it. Unemployment is down 11.5% year over year in Nassau County. So why are union representatives coming in here telling us that this will solve the unemployment problem? This is politics at its finest. It is unbelievable, and I'm sick and tired of it, number one. Number two, as a Cuban-American, first generation, born of Cuban parents that escaped communism, my parents came to this country with a dream, okay? At the end of the day, I am telling you now, my parents are part of a book and a part of a story that have to deal with the Cuban-American underworld. They were involved in the gambling business. They were involved in something called La Bolita. Anybody here who knows the numbers game understands that, okay? Their last name is the Davilas, D-A-V-I-L-A. Google it. They had number holes from Brooklyn Mother Gaston Boulevard all the way from East New York Avenue to the Belt Parkway. Gambling is a disease, and my parents and my uncles and aunts came from Cuba and were professionals in it and worked with the Italian mafia to legitimize it in New York City. Legitimize it in New York City. Rupert Murdoch came in and funded the New York Lottery. Labeled my father, labeled my uncle criminals. They had to leave this country. They had to leave this country. I'm not defending their actions. Gambling is a disease. I understand it. They profited off of the misery of many African-Americans in Harlem. My uncle was the only Cuban-American allowed to operate in Harlem under eternal Salerno, Tony Salerno, head of the Genovese crime family. I am not kidding about this. So if you understand the New York Lottery, Rupert Murdoch came in, and the New York Lottery was supposed to fund the New York State education system. When was the last time the New York Lottery cut a check to the New York Board of Ed? We spend, we are the number-one spender of education in the country, New York State, and we ranked 25th, last I heard? The lottery does not fund anything. The lottery...
Can we get to the subject at hand, Elise?
The subject at hand is that gambling does not work. Gambling is the disease, and gambling will ruin this county. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. You have a very fascinating story, which would make a Netflix movie, I think.
It is on Netflix.
Oh, it is? Okay. All right. Have a good evening. Julie, Julie March, Julie, I'm sorry. Julie, go ahead, give your name. I'm sorry, I got distracted.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
We know each other well.
For very many years. For the rest of the group...
Thank you for coming down. I'm sorry you had to wait so long.
Thank you.
And if he was going to leave, I wish we would have put him on earlier before he disrupted anyone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Julie Marcasella. I'm a past president of the Nassau Council of Chambers of Commerce. I know you have...
A very distinguished, very hard-working past president. As a Chamber of Commerce of Lindbergh member, you were great.
Thank you.
You were on TV.
Yes.
You did commercials.
Yes, I did. All to support Main Street business owners at a time when Sandy so affected us very badly. Needless to say, I'm also president of the Elmon Chamber of Commerce currently, and a past president of nine years of the Merrick Chamber of Commerce. Small business is my passion. I have spoken, and our president, who was here prior, have met with the Sands organization. We have been assured that for their procurement needs, they will come to Nassau County business owners, of which we represent 10,000 Main Street business owners. That's 10,000 among our 45 chambers. If we don't have it, they don't need it. So I am saying tonight, please keep this in mind when you make your decision about transferring the lease. Yes, we are in favor of it, and yes, we will cooperate to the nth degree to provide the services and goods that will be needed by the Sands organization. I'd also like to just say this. As a parent of two boys who are now in their 40s, I have seen parenting change dramatically over the years, and this is purely personal, separate from my original statement. The bottom line is, kids today only need a cell phone and a PayPal account, and they gamble. Call it whatever you want to call it, they are statistic majors, they do not need a building to go into that's bricks and mortar. All they need is this.
And an app, an app.
And an app.
Called FanDuel.
And we provide all of that for them. I now have a grandson who can synchronize a computer, a cell phone, and his Apple products, numerous ones, and get them all working. I don't know how to turn one of them on without him. So our bottom line is, do we really need a building to promote gambling and addiction of it? No. And there are adults using this, too. So I just ask you to keep that in mind, and we'd be fooling ourselves if we thought a building was going to deter anyone from a gambling problem. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Julie. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Jody Cataldo? Catal, okay.
Hi, this is the first time I'm coming to a zoning meeting. Is that what it's called?
Planning, planning.
Planning, planning, sorry. But I have to say that you've absolutely been very pleasant and the rest of your committee, and I really appreciate everybody was, no matter how boring it was, you still looked interested, and I thank you for the respect. I'm just new. Maybe my second meeting, I might not be as favorable with my review.
You're welcome. My mother would be happy to hear that.
Yes, she did a good job. Anyway, after listening to everybody, you keep trying to bring everybody back to the essence of this meeting, which is whether or not we should change the holding of the property. And quite honestly, I've been very disappointed with things and people and government that I thought they would do the right thing by us. And I personally, me, and I think the people know that we want to be able to trust your judgment, and that if you were changing the lease to some organization or some community or project or attorneyship or whatever you want to do, that it would be something that would be good for the area, not just making a buck and giving union work. You would take everything into consideration. But I don't feel as though it's true. I can't trust if you transfer the ownership to somebody who then makes a determining factor about what you should do with that land. I feel that what you should do is hold on to it. We should have more hearings, we should decide what the endgame is going to be, and then decide what we're going to do. You're giving somebody a license to do whatever they please, and after being in the redistricting and listening to the town of Hempstead and listening to the Nassau County Committee, just listen to people sitting here and crying about what they were doing with the redistricting and how they were cracking and everything else, and how they were separating people's vote, how can we trust the government to do what's right? And I'm not disparaging you, but I'm saying, I think we should let it stay where it is. Let's do some more investigation work. Let's come up with an endgame. And you know what? I think that you'll be very happy, because nobody wants to see it empty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is the last speaker. Kevin McKenna? Okay. You're standing between dinner and a German, a German and dinner.
You're a good chairman. I like you.
Thank you.
And I don't say that often, trust me.
Okay. I have 19 years of experience.
I don't want to waste my time.
Okay, go on.
If he held, if he held, thank you. Go ahead, you could speak now, because he's put the clock back. Go ahead.
I have 19 years' experience, and another 16 in Rockville Senate chairing the Board of Appeals.
You're not the greenfield that owns the food stores, are you?
No, 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 that's a friend of mine. No, thank you. It's a tough business.
All right. I'm sure everybody wants to go.
Start the clock, John.
All right, Kevin McKenna, I am an advocate for honest and competent government, and I'm also the editor and founder of Nassau County NY News. I am known for going to meetings and livestreaming the event so that the public can see what goes on. And I'm very, very disappointed tonight in the lack of transparency, and it's not your fault, it's the fault of whoever is responsible for letting the public know about this meeting tonight. I know that, I know that an announcement was buried inside the Nassau County Legislature's website, where 99.99% of the public doesn't even know where it is. Now, what really, really troubles me is that I got here a little late tonight, and listen, I'm all for unions, and I want the unions to get whatever work, and I'm on the fence about this project, but it is disgraceful, it is disgraceful that I witnessed regular taxpayers and residents... That's very rude. That's very rude what you just did.
Okay.
I am very upset that I watched, I got here late, there were 200 union people lining the hallway here, preventing the regular public from getting close to the entrance of the door of this meeting room. Now, I'll bet you that if you checked the residents of where half of the, and I'm all for the union guys, I'll bet you if you checked the residents, half of them probably don't even live in Nassau County. And they prevented taxpayers and residents from being able to sit and get into the room and sit in the room. and sit in the room. But what really, really is bizarre is that while we were out in the lobby, those of us who chose to wait out in the lobby, there is a flat-screen TV on the wall out there where you could see the meeting taking place. But guess what? You couldn't hear what was being said. Nassau County has an IT department that spends millions and millions of dollars. How is it that the speakers in the lobby out here didn't allow the people to hear what was being said in this room while we couldn't get into the room? I urge you, I urge you to announce a meeting properly. How is it that 19 Nassau County legislators, not one of them that I saw, and I checked most all their pages, not one of them announced to their constituents the fact that this meeting was taking place tonight? The county executive did not announce to his constituents that this meeting was taking place tonight, and that doesn't surprise me, because yesterday, the county executive didn't announce the State of the Union until two hours before the meeting started. And lastly, I'm closing. So while I was waiting out in the lobby, normally what I do, and this is a half an hour after the meeting started, I'm very proficient on the Nassau County website, I said, "No problem, I'm just gonna go and take the Nassau County link," because normally I know where it is, "and I'm gonna take the link, the Nassau County livestream of this meeting, and I'm gonna put it on my page so all my 18,000 followers can see what's going on." But guess what, Mr. Chairman? Nassau County, whoever's responsible for livestreaming this event tonight, the livestream link for your meeting tonight, it did not get put on the Nassau County's Facebook page until after I did a post on my page embarrassing Nassau County that there's no livestream link put up. So whoever wanted to watch this meeting tonight that knows how to find where the link is that's buried, because you don't want anybody to find it, the people who know how to go on the livestream link...
We got the message.
The people who know how to go on the livestream link couldn't, because the county didn't livestream this meeting until after a half an hour after it started. It's not your fault. The incompetence by this Nassau County government is beyond belief, and I urge you to have another meeting where the residents are told about the meeting and you don't allow the union to prevent the taxpayers from coming into the room. Thank you very much.
All right. So that concludes all the speakers we have signed up, but someone passed me, Josh, you spoke already? I called you, you never spoke?
I never heard you, no.
Okay, then come up now, because I did call you earlier. There was a slip here.
I mean, I was in the room the whole time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Josh Slaughter up at the Mason Tenders District Council, we represent 5,000 union laborers here on Long Island. I do want to point out, you know, union members aren't some tax-exempt entity, they are human beings, they are taxpayers of residents of Long Island and live here too, so, you know, they're impacted just as much as, you know, any other resident that lives here, and I think that's an important thing to note. You know, as far as the lease, I know a lot of folks are concerned that maybe this is premature and you're transferring the lease to a developer. Point to note is, anyone who's going to develop land, they really can't spend money and put together a proposal to present unless they know they have the ability to build. It's just not good business practice, and it's not what takes place. I mean, I sit on the Suffolk County IDA, you never have someone come before, you know, looking for assistance that already doesn't own the land, and so, you know, you need that in order to move forward. And there's going to be plenty of community opportunity before the town, before the county, you know, that talks about quality of life issues and environment, and certainly there's an opportunity for everyone to do that when the time comes. So this is not going to bypass any of that, and this does not rubber stamp anything. I also think it's important to note that, you know, for everyone that is so fixated on a casino, if a casino does even get a license here for Long Island, this will be about 10% of the overall project. So it's not a casino project, it's a destination resort that will happen to have a casino in it. And I go to plenty of conferences all across the country, because we can't have any here on Long Island, and, you know, there's some casinos in those areas. Doesn't mean everyone's going, is they're going there to be a gambler. You show up for a work conference, if you go to the restaurants, and you go to the entertainment, and you do other things in the area, and you spend money, and you benefit the local economy, and you don't have to go near a casino, and this would be a very similar situation. There's a good chance they don't get the license. I mean, there's five or six proposals for one license. There's a Bailey's, a Caesars, related company at the Hudson Yards, Steve Cohen who owns the Mets at Willets Point, Coney Island, there's plenty of reputable, you know, casino builders that are fighting for one license, and so maybe it's a 50-50 chance they even get the license. But the important thing to note is they're committed to building on this property whether they get that or not. So the casino doesn't determine whether something gets built or not, certainly would be a component that helps them build what they envision now. You know, Conference Center, a lot of folks said, you know, people don't come back to casinos. Well, again, people are gonna be coming here for a conference, they're not coming for a casino, and I can tell you, we go back to the same places every year or two for conferences. So if it's a good, you know, union hotel and union conference center, they'll keep coming back. Fentanyl. Fentanyl's been here for 15 years, we've had a crisis, a drug crisis here all across the country. It's not coming because of casinos, it's here already. You want to know what fixes the fentanyl problem? Opportunity, jobs. We have a, called the Learn Program, pre-apprenticeship high school program, the laborers, we're talking to Roosevelt, Westbury, and many other school districts on Long Island, to help ninth graders get a four-year training in construction skills, because not everyone's going to college.
Josh.
Yeah, I'm gonna finish up real quick.
Okay, thank you.
You know, opportunities, jobs for high school kids. It's projects like this that will give those kids an opportunity to have a career, that they can afford a house on Long Island. Construction worker or laborer makes 70, 80 grand a year, not some $30,000 a year warehouse job. So that's how you stop kids from getting into drugs, giving them real opportunities, and this will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for batting cleanup. A few notes before we adjourn. First, I received one email, we're gonna, from Peter Gaffney, and we're gonna make it part of the record, and I want to give a few thank yous. I want to thank our outstanding staff, some applause for our staff for doing a great job. I want to thank our stenographer, I want to thank my fellow commissioners, and last but not least, the men in blue, Nassau County Police Officers that were here tonight to keep the peace and keep us safe. Thank you very much. This time we'll entertain a motion from the Commission.
So we want to do a motion to close the hearing, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on OSPEC Number One of 2023 and send the item to OSPEC for their action.
Motion made. Do we have a second? We have motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Have a good evening, John. It's motion carried, we're done. I said nine o'clock. Thank you, everybody in the audience that's still here. Yes, we made a motion adjourned. It'll be posted on our website when it comes back to us from OSPEC. The next, the next meeting is March 9th, and then there's a meeting March 26th. It's, we have our own website. And I'm sorry about the livestream, but I'll look into it, I'm sorry about, if I knew early about outside, I would have... I don't believe that. I don't believe that. I don't believe.
Why do I, why am I involved? Exactly. Yeah, why did he just call me out? Yes, he just called me out. Why did he call me out? Yeah, that's not good. I'm not gonna... No, he's, he's troubled.
This is not a normal meeting.
No.
I heard the other night. A lot of people have had...
Say a little...
Rachel Dennis.
Oh, yeah. All right. Barry's kids, they're in my real estate. Dick Cohen was telling me, he's a big debt man, he's going out to follow up, like a question of due conscience.
Oh, yeah, it's the last store that's...
Yeah, it's pretty nice.
You know, I...